Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the business meetings for the city of Prattville. This evening, our first meeting will be a public hearing. Senator Plurk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Counselor Striplin?
Here.
Counselor Jackson?
Here.
Counselor Brown, here.
Counselor Storms?
Here.
Counselor Fables?
Here.
Counselor Stritchett?
Here.
Counselor Boone?
Here.
Clarity of form present, I call the public hearing to order. The first hearing and only hearing this evening is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per time of eleven, chapter sixty-seven of Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended. Is anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Hearing none, declaring the public hearing on this meeting closed. At this time, we will move into our regular agenda for council meeting. Your asked to please stand if you're able to. We consider your information.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me prayer, please. Father, in the midst of our personal agendas, we pause to thank you for the generous gift of this day and for your gifts of life, health, strength, and for the safety of our community. Our heartfelt sympathy is extended to friends and families of our community that have lost loved ones in recent days. We are mindful of all that are daily wrestling with the challenging issues of life. We ask for your hand of comfort, your gift of peace, to be with all affected. We pray for all citizens that are providing service to their fellow man, whether local or abroad, whether military, civilian, or public service. We pray for their efforts to be successful and at the end of their duty for their safe return to their family. We pray for the health and healing of nations in conflict, our country, our state, our great city, and their respective leadership, and for all of those that have an influence on history. Tonight, as we conduct the business of our city, we pray our thoughts and actions are pleasing to you, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Senator Plurk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin?
Here.
Counselor Jackson?
Here.
Counselor Brown, here.
Counselor Storms?
Here.
Counselor Fables?
Here.
Counselor Stritchett?
Here.
Counselor Boone?
Here.
Clarity of form present, I call the meeting to order. The character trade for this month is availability, willingness to change by schedule prior at least to meet a need. This time, the chair will entertain a blue bill of minutes of the public hearing and the city council meeting on May first, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the minutes signify by raising your right hand. All those by a like sign, the minutes are adopted. This time, council will entertain comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Is anyone present that would like to speak on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Mayor, any comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Now, I'd like, I'd like for us to take a moment to acknowledge that this week is National Police Week and today, today is Peace Officers Memorial Day. You know, President John F. Kennedy declared the first peace officer Memorial Day on May fifteenth, nineteen sixty-two. This day is to honor all peace officers who, through their courageous acts, lost their lives or were disabled in the line of duty. According to recent statistics reported for two, twenty seventeen, we have lost one hundred and twenty-eight law enforcement officers in the line of duty. These officers sacrificed their lives to protect ours. And I would like to take this time to thank all law enforcement officers for their dedication and service throughout this country and especially in our city. And if we could, let's give our officers in blue a round of applause, please. And if I can, at this time, I would like to have Corporal Jerome Chapman to come forward with his family if he so desires. Corporal Chapman has been coming up through the ranks and it's my pleasure and my honor to assist in the promotion that he is accepting and as we can tell, he is, he has benefited his family with him, and it is so important. In case you haven't noticed, Corporal Chapman from time to time, because he's a little out of color, he's sometimes even wearing his yellow, possibly, and that has been a, a big, big success, I believe, in getting out and reaching out to the public and making his presence known. But it's most certainly glad to see he has not only supported his blue family, but also his, his blood family as well. I'm trying to keep up the time, they've taken the pen away and gone to Gilford some, so they've, I guess HR might have spoken too many things, so.
Thank you, thank you for all the work you've done and the dedication you've achieved. Have done this city well, and I've seen a lot of broken news over the last several years, and I'm glad that you're here with us and hope to continue that for many many years.
Would you like to address the council?
First of all, I thank the chief, assistant chief, command staff, the mayor, my coworkers, my parents for this opportunity. And thank the chief for seeing something in me to allow me to be able to move up in these ranks and like to thank the council.
Thank you.
He might be watching, so he might be trying to get into politics as well, so.
We'll photo off now.
Thank you, thank you for the time. Thank you, families, for sharing your role.
And as they're making their way back to their seats, we, we have some others that I would like to briefly talk about and mention and have them come up as well, introduce them to the council and to our citizens. Completed, these officers have completed their training evolution to being released to duty assignments. Daniel Marshall, Christopher Clark, by the way, he won top honors in his academy class, Stephen Harris, Anthony Humphries, the family of men. All you gentlemen, just come forward, please. Want to say thank you and congratulations. Thank you, congratulations, especially to Officer Clark for all of your hard work over there, having the top honors in your class, speak volumes. And one thing I've been very, very proud of over the last several years is that Prattville, whenever we've had some graduates, have always graduated very, very high, top honors, one, two, and three are in there. So it's, thank you, gentlemen, this is our council, these are our citizens who'll be serving, and would you mind, I want to address the council?
Yeah, we need five more.
Sorry, that reading cannot aid, but. But last call for the microphone.
Thank you, chief, everybody, for the opportunity to be here today. The training's been going great, actually, the training, I feel like Prattville Police Department is the best police department. I just appreciate everything that you guys have done for us and given us the opportunity to be here today.
Anybody? So now, I don't need to watch out for opportunities, but now, thank you again, and thank your families as well, because we look at you, we also know that you have family behind you, and we thank the council and the chiefs, because it does take people. We are a mechanized service-oriented organization. It takes people, it takes training, it takes equipment, and that equates to funding. So thank you, council, thank you, thank you, chief.
And chief, don't, don't, don't go off too far.
Recently, the VFW presented their Police Officer of the Year award, and it was to Lieutenant Wayne Barlow. It was an honor to be at that event, and he, Lieutenant Barlow has come up through the ranks and has worn mid titles and everything else, and so I was an honor on that one as well. During the event, they also recognized Fire Fighter of the Year award to Captain Travis Roach. Many of you guys might recognize him by name, or others might recognize him by his statue, which is very large, and, but he has been a very great asset to this community as well. And then the third one at that event was the paramedic of the year, it was Sergeant Travis McGowan on Saturday, and I'd like to say congratulations, we didn't forget it all, and thank you to everybody at the VFW for honoring these hard-working, dedicated first responders. And if I might, chief, present you with this proclamation. It does discuss about the National Police Week. It says, whereas there are approximately nine hundred and thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of Prattville Police Department, whereas nearly sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers reported each year resulting in approximately sixteen thousand injuries, whereas since the first reported death in seventeen ninety-one, almost twenty thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made ultimate sacrifices and have been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Prattville Police Department. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, whereas three hundred and sixty new names of fallen heroes being added to the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in spring. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Fund's thirtieth annual Camel Light Vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, twenty eighteen, whereas Camel Light Vigil is part of the National Police Week. Now therefore, as mayor of the city of Prattville, I do hereby recognize May thirteenth through May nineteenth as National Police Week and plan May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day. And the city of Prattville calls upon all Republicans to display the flag and have staff from their home to businesses on this day. Please join me in publicly saluting the service of our law enforcement in our community and our communities across the nation. Chief, if you would accept this, I would be honored.
Sir.
As you can tell, he is all pilled, so, and he's going to do a presentation for that. We can only do what we do because of the council and the mayor's office in support of the other departments in the city, and if it wasn't for everybody working together, we wouldn't be where we're at, and just continue to support us, we need it. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
The council has always been busy, two weeks since the last council meeting, and I've been honored to attend the creative performing arts twenty eighteen on Revenant on May fifteenth and enjoy a wonderful night of music honoring Al Davis Music Legacy. I saw some of our counselors there, and I hope you guys enjoyed it as much as we have. The Parks and Rec, the Quality Life Department really stepped it up, I believe, this year, and, and next year, they have a higher bar to, to try to excel to. And I want to thank Kelly Cook and Barbara Simpson and Brittany, as they have worked so hard to bring this department and the various divisions of it up to a higher standard each and every year. So thank you again on that one. Friday night and Saturday, we had great crowds at this year's City Fest. We all know this is a chamber event, it was hot, and it was beautiful weather, I was wondering if the sun went down on Friday night, and we certainly do appreciate all the city staff that assisted the chamber in making this event a very successful year, I believe. Let's talk about the hot weather, talk a little bit about the similar cool weather. And the only way I can sort of step into that is the splash pads, cool water there. It is officially open, we hope our kids will be able to enjoy this asset at Pratt Park to cool off this summer. And we all know the splash pad is part of the, the summer of twenty twelve, and it's part of the Coca-Cola Challenge that Prattville kind of came together and, and over thirty million, thirty million votes to award that park award from the Coca-Cola Company, and it's been a success, and glad to see everyone out there totally enjoying it. Recently, I have had the honor and the pleasure to speak with Senator Chambly, and he was able to bring me some reports that one of the grants that we had applied for, A.D.M. Grant, grant, CDBG grant, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars had been approved for the sewer infrastructure of South Industrial Park. I'd like to thank Governor Ivey, Senator Chambly, and Representative Beckman for supporting this grant for more infrastructure improvements in the city of Prattville. And just as, just yesterday, I was also able to reach out and talk with Senator Chambly about some of our up-and-coming needs for this community, so maybe be bringing those, would be prepared to bring those before the next, next session on that one. I invite everyone to come out to help at Kingston Park at nine forty-five this Saturday for the mayor's bike ride. We'll kick off the Kids to Park Day, invite to Pratt Park's finish line, enjoy Touch a Truck afterwards. Anybody here in the audience who's not been, the Touch a Truck was started several years ago, and one thing I really found out, it is set up for the young and the young in heart as well, so if you have time, please make it on out. A few hours looking forward to the Prattville Farmer's Market season grand opening on Saturday, June the sixth, the second, at seven AM, in the grove, as we all customally seem to note it now. There's one other department I really feel like I need to bring up to the forefront at this point in time. It's one that actually helps bring some education, it brings some hiring processes, some promotional processes, some reclassification processes, and also, at the end of the pay period, every two weeks, it brings forth the payroll, and that is our HR department. I want to thank them for all of their hard work and dedication, and it's really been paying off, and so I've seen so many different ways, you know, council has approved some of our studies for the promotional policies in, in the police and fire department, and that investment's being dividends for remodeling recently, I've seen more productivity, increased productivity, and I'm sitting clerk of office, and HR department, judicial, and I want to thank them, thank this council as well, because as I mentioned earlier, we are a mechanized service-oriented organization. It takes funding, it takes people, it takes equipment, so thank you, thank you. Mr. President, that's the end of my report.
That's all, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. Listen, play guitar.
Any questions or comments for the mayor?
Yes, sir. I stick with, what's the latest, and I should ask Kelly before, on the pavilion at a Pratt Park, the once construction expected to start and finish?
Starts Monday and finished by July the third.
So in time for our July fourth celebration, all right, just where I mean, now?
For the, for the recording, it starts Monday, we hope it's ready by the fourth of July. Weather permitting, the good Lord helping us out, near which way he came, so.
It'll happen.
Our officer, he hopes so. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into report from the council on special committees. Counselor Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Storms?
Yes.
Counselor Kegels?
No, sir.
Counselor Stritchett?
No, sir.
Counselor Bennett?
No, sir.
Mr. Oakley, your report on city conferences?
Yes, sir. Everyone should have a packet in front of them. First page in your packets, general fund revenue report, and it shows that we have received twenty-three million, thirty-three thousand, six hundred and one dollars for the fiscal year to date, and this is up two point seven four percent compared to the same period of the prior year. Next page is the tax breakdown comparison, and on the tax side, we're at four point eight six percent for the month of previous April. Next three pages show the general fund expenses broken down by department, and we are a little over fifty-eight percent of the way through fiscal year, and we have spared fifty-seven point six six percent of our budget expenditure using the general fund. Next page is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement, and the wastewater fund generated in net income from operations of two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and ten dollars for the month of April. Operating expenses continue to come in under budget for this fund as well. The next page is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement, and the sanitation fund generated in net income of thirty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars for April. Expenses for the year are still coming in slightly under budget at around fifty-six Next page is the judicial special revenue fund income statement, and the judicial fund had another very strong month and reported in net income of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for April. The expenses remain slightly under budget due to debt for this fund as well. Next page is the bank balances report, and the total of all bank balances citywide was twenty-five million, two hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars at the end of April. The last page in your packet is the citywide accounts payable and debt balances report. The total outstanding AP and debt balance at the end of the month was sixty-one million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and nine dollars.
Any questions, Mr. Oakley? Thank you very much for the, the package and the information that came with it. At this time, we will move into the opportunity to create a consent agenda to be included in Resolution Number One to authorize the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per time of eleven, chapter sixty-seven of Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended. Resolution Number Two to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance or to their abatement and set a public hearing per time of eleven, chapter sixty-seven of Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended. Resolution Number Three to declare the accessory structure located at two twenty-seven Cloke New Drive to be unsafe and a public nuisance. And Resolution Four to set a public hearing to grant a restaurant retail liquor license to HOA Restaurant Holder LLC doing business as Hoovers of Prattville. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to place these items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of placing these items on the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All those by a like sign. We have the consent agenda properly before us. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to hold Resolution, Resolution Number Four until June nineteenth of this year. So moved.
We have a motion to hold Resolution Number Four to June nineteenth. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Storms, why are we, where are we looking to hold it?
Chief, you want to address that?
I believe you want to be able to talk about the attachment on one of the persons that applied.
Yes, sir.
One of the persons on the application for the alcohol license has pending charges in Georgia, but he would not be on premises here in Prattville, from what we understand. He would not be a manager associated with Prattville for the, Prattville's, uh, Hoovers.
But he still had pending charges in Georgia. Okay, and that's why I'm going to hold it until June nineteenth.
Okay. Bye-bye. Thank you, chief. Any further discussion before we vote on your nomination, holding Resolution Number All those in favor of holding Resolution Number Four to June nineteenth signify by raising your right hand? All those by a like sign, this resolution is, Number Four is held until June nineteenth. The remaining three items are on our consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion for the adoption of the remaining three items on our consent agenda.
Uh-huh.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on any of the other items remaining on our consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand? All those by a like sign, our consent agenda is adopted. We'll now move into our regular agenda. This evening, we have two ordinances. First ordinance is to establish stormwater illicit discharge detection and elimination procedures in compliance with the city of Prattville's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this ordinance?
Yes, sir. To establish stormwater illicit discharge detection and elimination procedures in compliance with the city of Prattville's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Before we can move forward with this item tonight, we would need to suspend the rules. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. President? That was already introduced two weeks ago, so you don't need to reintroduce, I'll just put it.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion concerning this ordinance? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand? All those by a like sign, this ordinance is adopted. Ordinance Number Two to establish post-construction stormwater management procedures in compliance with the city of Prattville's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems permit. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this ordinance?
Yes, sir. To establish post-construction stormwater management procedures in compliance with the city of Prattville's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this ordinance? All those in favor of this adoption signify by raising your right hand? All those by a like sign. At this time, we'll entertain comments from persons present. Yes, ma'am?
John Wayne Finnegan, two eleven, Derek Trace. You know, I've come before you about getting a crosswalk, especially now that we've also opened up and the bridge is open for the creek walk, and I just thought it was interesting because this was in the Montgomery Advertiser USA section, I don't see, I think it was last week earlier, but it says perils of walking in USA, USA increase, and it says pedestrian fatalities in the U.S. have skyrocketed forty-six percent since two thousand nine, including the public health crisis as researchers try to understand the reasons. Almost six thousand pedestrians, people who might have been out walking after dinner, hurrying to get to work or rushing across the street, were killed by motor vehicles on our long American roads in two thousand and six. So I don't know what process or what progress has been regarding getting a crosswalk, but I sincerely think now that this creek walk is open on this side and the bridge is completed, that one needs to be really investigated and, and put up, because I, I see it all the time, actually going home to a new bridge, and they're constantly crossing and running, and I see kids, et cetera. So I really hope that all of you will work on to get one established. Last, not last, the second, it's been ten and a half months since we've had a webmaster, and I would like to take, thank Dr. Semus for taping these, and I hope all of these have been taped, that when they're for do get a webmaster, that they are put on been taped, that when enough do get a webmaster, that they are put on the city's website. And lastly, as you are all aware, I was not a happy camper with the Prattville-Vittaga school committee meeting, it was advertised on the city's website as a public hearing, work session public hearing, the ad in the progress said that, Councilman Starms said, "Make sure you come to the public hearing," and then it was changed in midstream to a question and answer. So I hope when enough, another one is held, that it's advertised correctly, so that we citizens know what to expect, because we were caught out, it was caught out of the blue, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Marty Roden, 138 Wright Street, I'm coming to y'all as a private citizen of the city, and the house behind our property has been abandoned for a couple of years, and the backyard in front of our guy didn't real bad shape, and it was a frequent flyer, the weeding overgrown lots, and in the last week, we had a crew come in and clean it up, so they did a very good job, and Brandon, the code enforcement, was on, and they did well, so I know there's a convoluted practice and procedure in place when you're dealing with weeding overgrown lots, but when the city could do something, they did something quickly, so you hear complaints all the time, and just want to tell the women something right happened.
Mr. Roden, can you remind me of that address?
It's right behind us, Robert, it's, no, it's the house behind us, I think it's Gibson Street, it's right behind us, but they had worked all day, and they didn't leave stumps, but they left stops of edibles, and then Brandon let them come back, clear everything down to the ground, so...
Thank you, Mr. Roden. Anyone else like to address Dr. Simmons?
Dr. Jerry Simmons, 141 North Chestnut Street, I wanted to piggyback on what Ms. Finnegan talked about, about last week's so-called public hearing. Let me reiterate what the League of Municipality has published and said, what constitutes a public hearing. A public hearing is an opportunity for the public to make statements to you, based on whatever time limit the president sets. In this particular case, Mr. Strickland set a time limit of three minutes, somehow despite advertising, despite Councilman Starms, despite Councilman Kegels calling for a break, at the break, this suddenly got changed to a Q and A. A Q and A is not a public hearing, and so that ended up being, in many opinion, sort of a debacle. I don't think it stood well with the citizens. You may want to look at last Sunday's letter to the editor, and I can send it to you, I can also send you what the League says about what is a public hearing. That was not a public hearing. A Q and A simply doesn't constitute a public hearing, so if you want to hold a Q and A, hold a Q and A, but do not label it and advertise it as a public hearing, it simply isn't. So the meeting should have ended at the time that the public hearing was evidently either canceled or mislabeled, so again, I think it's not a good way to get started with the public, because after all, we want to get grassroots support if we're going to do an improvement to our school system, and it was not well received by the moderator, so I just want you to know, and that's the feedback. So I'll be happy to send y'all what the League said, and also the letter to the editor. That's really all I have.
Sir, can I address it?
Doc Simmons, were you able to ask a question or make a statement?
I was able to ask a question, I was not able to do what Mr. Strickland promised, a three-minute time limit to make a statement. What I found interesting was that certain people were cut off, because we have to get to other folks, and yet someone else was able to stand up and read a historical statement. So I find it interesting that depending on who you were and what you were saying, this particular moderator certainly controlled things, so bottom line is, a Q and A is not a public hearing. The public hearing is to you, not to some group, and you have a choice at a public hearing to either answer the statement, or as you typically do, you just take it under advisement, and that's fine, but this total misdirection at the break was uncalled for and improper, it just simply was not what you advertised. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that the Q and A, you know, I was able to ask some questions, yes, but I wasn't able to do a full three-minute statement, I will at another date.